Do deep hole drilling.
Okay. No, I know.
They did, uh, archaeologist, archaeology. You can't make this stuff up. No, no. It was good. He actually found nothing.
Good. Yes, otherwise.
Alright, so let's see, we're gonna. Quiet this thing down.
Oh. Good evening, the Town of Cromwell Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty five, calling to order, Alice Kelly, Chair.
Mike Canata.
Andrew Holt.
John Comtoys, Alternate.
Ann Grasso.
Nick Demetriades.
Dr. Colin Osby.
Ben John Zumar, Fellow Alternate.
Okay, and I would like to, um, say that we have.
Make a motion to seek the alternates.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. Get the words out of your mouth, right?
No, I was gonna say congratulations to, um, Richard, who isn't here tonight, Andrew, Doug, and Brian on their election.
Thank you.
Okay, and we all.
The alternates who are sitting.
Aye.
Vinny.
John John.
And John.
John.
Thank you.
Okay, and with us, we have our Zone Enforcement Officer.
Yeah, we need to do the approval of the agenda.
Okay, I was just doing the roll call, but that's okay.
Yes.
Okay, um, approval of the agenda, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I need to add three things. First thing I'm gonna add is, uh, performance bond release for the Landon at one fifty hundred Suppiter Drive. With application twenty-three twenty-eight.
That'd be C?
We'll add that as C under new business.
And how much is that for?
Uh, ten thousand and fifty-four dollars.
And that's for Landon?
Plus interest.
Plus interest, turn.
Yes, and that's for application twenty-three twenty-eight.
Twenty-three. Okay.
And then we have two applications to add under new business, except in schedule applications. We have application number twenty-five thirty-one, which is an application for a special permit for a rear lot at one hundred Nooksville Road. And we have application twenty-five thirty-two, which is an application for a re-subdivision at one hundred Nooksville Road.
And what was twenty-five thirty-one? I didn't get it all.
Uh, twenty-five.
Rear lot.
Of the rear lot.
Rear lot. It's a special permit.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So that's eight C and eight D?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Seating of al- we already did seating of alternates?
Yep.
Okay. Public comment, moving on. Bruce, you're on.
Hello. We have a full-page list. Do you have any questions or any comments? I'd be glad to entertain.
I just have one, and it's twenty-five. Whoops, hold on. Twenty-five, twenty-six, one hundred Setheby. It says it's pending.
That's an error. She was approved for the liquor license.
That's what I thought. Okay, that's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or anything?
Quick question for Bruce.
Yes?
Did Di Martino do anything on Main Street other than his wetlands? He got wetlands approval.
Right, he has not submitted an application.
He has not submitted that application?
Not as of yet.
Not as of yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on. Mr. Popper?
Uh, just, I'm sure everybody's aware the Medical Office Building opened up. I'm sure everybody's also aware that Popeyes is under construction, and their construction continues over in front of the Stop and Shop. Um, we also had a new pet shop open up at the Shop Right Shopping Center. We're very happy to see that. We're very happy to see, um, the old, uh, Apria Healthcare Medical Building, which was later Safety Light Glass, that has been sold, and it is now occupied by Burritt Processing. They did leave the offices up front for, for the Apria Healthcare, so they're still occupying a small portion of the building. The building's about a sixty thousand square foot building. Uh, the majority of it is being occupied, and it's owned by Buritt, Buritt Processing, which is a company that makes electrical control boxes, very similar to, uh, the guys over on Commerce Drive.
Ronnie Berger.
Yep, Ronnie Berger, very similar type of thing. Ronnie's machines are designed for, um, municipalities, specifically sewer systems. Uh, their machines are designed for large pharmaceutical companies, which use a lot of water for manufacturing, so we're very happy to have them there. We also have the other company, which is up on Al Cap Ridge. So we now have three companies manufacturing these large electrical boxes, which are used in your, uh, processing, manufacturing. So it's very interesting. So we're very happy to have them here. They have about thirty-five employees. They expect to get up to about sixty. The whole area of the building formerly occupied by the warehouse portion of Safety Light Glass is gonna be used as a manufacturing area. So it's very good to see that building go. We're pretty lucky on Sebethi. Um, we saw the old office building go, which is now Connecticut Water Company, so things are moving along there.
That's right.
Uh, the Price Right Building is gonna be occupied by Advanced Auto. So we're happy to see that space filled. Um, we're also very happy that the Revisa family, um, has been very cooperative. I don't know if anybody's been down Kirby Road and seen their property there. It's pretty amazing what they've done, and they're gonna be working on cleaning up the properties on Sebethi.
Yeah.
So we're very happy about that. So those are some of the things going on. Obviously, we're still waiting for the plans. I spoke, uh, to the developers of one hundred Berlin Road. They're hoping to have the plans in between after Thanksgiving and before the beginning of December, so we'll see what happens. It's pretty close. That'll be the final site plan. So we're working with them on that, so, uh, those are some of the things going on. Um, I don't know if anybody has any questions?
What about the new, um, wonderful grocery store?
It's open.
Right.
Very impressive. I'm sorry, I forgot that. The Turkish Grocery Store is open. If anybody gets a chance, you ought to go in there. They have really nice produce. They have an amazing, uh, meat department, lots of lamb, if you like lamb, and, um, they also have cheeses, very, you know, basically Mediterranean cheeses, olive oil, olives. It's very, very impressive store, so we wish them good luck.
I know somebody that is in a restaurant and things like that, that had the lamb from there, and also steak, and said it was just out of this world, just out of this world.
Yeah, yeah, it's fresh meat. Pardon me?
No. Can't read the labels.
Yeah. That's why you gotta ask, you gotta ask. Yeah, no, it's very nice. It's very nice. So those are some of the things going on. Thank you for reminding me about that, Alice.
That's alright.
Do you think, uh, Popeyes is gonna get paved? It looks like they got their concrete curb done, sidewalk is done, asphalt plant's usually closed like December fifteenth.
Yeah, I think it's gonna get paved.
I talked with, uh, the, uh, GZ today.
Yeah, you think they're gonna make it?
I walked to, to check out the landscaping, 'cause I didn't notice any irrigation heads, and I asked him where the irrigation was put in. He said, I haven't put the heads in yet.
Okay.
Okay, don't pave unless you got the irrigation lines in, because that's gonna be one of the requirements.
Right, right. You think they're gonna make it with the paving? Yeah?
Say you would.
Excellent, excellent.
And we're very excited to see River Grace Plaza install a dumpster enclosure. So I wanna give them.
Yeah, it's only been, what, how many years? Congratulations.
Excuse me. So that's my report. I don't know if anybody has any other questions?
Anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on, Mr. Popper?
So we have new business, except in scheduled applications. So we have the application twenty-five twenty-nine, which is an application for a special permit under section four point three N of the zoning regulations of the Town of Cromwell to construct a commercial self-storage facility at six Piney Ridge Road. The applicant and the owner is DFC of Cromwell LLC. We would ask the commission to accept this application this evening and schedule it to be heard at our meeting at this, on December second. Because we have an extra week, they have time to post the legal notice.
It's posted. I've seen it. I've seen the sign up.
Well, we have to put our ad in the paper.
So special permit, public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept and schedule with a public hearing, application twenty-five twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Twelve-two. Aye.
Hey, Mr. Popper?
Application twenty-five dash thirty, which is an application for a special permit under section four point three point C of the zoning regulations of the Town of Cromwell for a liquor permit at a restaurant at thirty-five Berlin Road, number A. The applicant is Casino LLC, and the owner is River Grace Plaza LLC. This is actually the martini bar and pizza place. They sold it.
Okay.
So in order for them to operate, they need a new liquor permit.
Is it still gonna be a martini bar, or are they changing it up?
Nope, it's gonna be a martini. Well, as far as we know, it's just.
Just the way it is.
Yep.
Just the martinis.
Yep.
Just martinis?
Pizza and martinis.
December second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept and schedule application twenty-five dash thirty for December second.
Okay, moving on.
So we have the other applications, which we're just accepting this evening, which is twenty-three thirty.
Yeah, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Twenty-five thirty-one, application for, these numbers should be changed. It should be application twenty-five thirty-one, application for a re-subdivision, one hundred Nooksville Road. Um, we would accept that tonight and schedule it to be heard our second meeting in December.
Twelve-two, oh, no, twelve, uh.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. I'll get it and do that tomorrow.
Okay, um, so I'll make a motion to accept and schedule application twenty-five thirty-one and twenty-five thirty-two?
No.
Yep.
They're together?
We can, we can hear them together, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and that would be for twelve sixteen.
Yep, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And now under new business, um, we have, I'll let Bruce go through that. It's the number of bonds to be reduced.
So item nine A, release of the bond for opportunity real estate equities at seventy Shumpike Road, that's the Medical Office Building. That dollar amount is thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars plus interest.
And you, everything is in order?
We have, we have full staff release on that?
Full release.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to release the bond for opportunity real estate equities at seventy Shumpike Road in the amount of thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars plus interest with full staff review and approval.
Second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, nine B, is the reduction of a performance bond for Denise and Denise Lightfoot and Edward Pergalotti at nine Winchester Way, and that reduction is, uh, releasing twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty cents.
How much is left?
I don't have that figure with me, but it's, uh, enough to cover the erosion control.
Oh, okay.
This was all the tree removal, stump removal, uh, filling.
I think that amount left is back in the, uh, in the packet. Yeah, it might not be back.
Is that my memo?
Did you find it?
Yeah, so what's your?
Yeah, I'll look.
So it's going from twenty-eight to eight.
Okay, so that's the re- reduction of twenty thousand.
Twenty.
So they're still holding back eight, in answer to your question.
And that, that, uh, balance of eight thousand two seventeen is also gonna cover, uh, lot pinning when they're done with the grading and seating.
I knew I saw the figure somewhere.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to reduce the bond for Denise Lightfoot and Ed Pergalotti at a nine Winchester Way in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty cents.
Is that plus interest or not?
All in favor?
There is no interest on that one.
Oh, there's no interest.
Not yet.
As recommended.
Second.
Second.
And that was recommended, fully recommended by staff.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The last one under, uh, new business, number nine C, it's a full release of a bond at the Landon in the amount of ten thousand, fifty-four dollars. That was to cover the performance bond work of the new parking lot in the rear of building, seven thousand.
And that's again with full staff approval?
Full staff approval.
And that's for ten thousand, fifty-four dollars?
Right, plus interest.
Plus interest.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to re- release, um, the remaining bond of ten thousand fifty, yeah, ten thousand, fifty-four dollars plus interest for application twenty-three twenty-eight, uh, parking lot and associated costs at the Landon.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Nicholas, you're on.
Thank you.
Town of Cromwell Planning and Zoning Commission Legal Notice. The Town of Cromwell Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM in the Town Council chambers of the Cromwell Town Hall at forty-one West Street on the following items. One, application twenty-five twenty-five, application to amend the Town of Cromwell zoning regulations. There are multiple proposed amendments, including but not limited to additional definitions, grammatical changes, and substantive changes, not all of which are enumerated in this notice. The Town of Cromwell is the applicant. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written testimony received. The applications are available for public inspection in the Office of Planning and Development. Alice Kelly, chairperson, dated in Cromwell, Connecticut, this third day of November, twenty twenty-five.
So, um, we can. Yep.
Motion to open the hearing for application twenty-five twenty-five.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so a couple of things. I'm gonna start with a memo dated November sixth, uh, from Jennifer to myself, um, which covers a couple of things. Um, there was a typographical error regarding the listing of the residential zones. Obviously, it should read R fifteen, R twenty-five, and R forty. And then also, because of the change in the state statutes, um, we're gonna be deletion of proposed amendment, page eleven, section six, subsection seven, parentheses two. It should be deleted in its entirety from the proposed amendment, and basically because while the Town of Cromwell historically required certified mail return receipt requested for notifying the butters of all public hearings, the Connecticut general statutes require only a certificate of mailing. As municipal zoning regulations must align with the state statutory requirements, we cannot proceed with this amendment to this section as originally proposed in the application. Please incorporate these corrections in the meetings. So, um, you'll find there, um, a letter from the Lower River Connecticut Valley, which concerns the zoning regulations, and their staff review found no potential intermunicipal impacts or negative impacts to the ecology of Long Island Sound. Both the administrative and the substantive change updates help to clarify the town's zoning intent. They make the town, they make the zoning regulations more accessible to residents, and overall are welcome changes. Thank you for consideration of these comments. If the Planning and Zoning Commission has any questions about this advisory report, please feel free to contact the staff. Uh, Marcos Gonzalez, Planner, RiverCog. And then it goes into, uh, the memo that summarizes the amendments that Bruce and I and Jennifer worked on, on the regulations. And I'd like to explain something. I apologize for the problem with the regulations, and I apologize that we're continuing to make improvements to the regulations. I want everybody to understand that when we signed this contract, um, I was later that year diagnosed with cancer, and I was very ill from basically February twenty-three until March twenty-four. And I was basically healthy from probably about June to September, and then I got very sick in the fall of twenty-four. So, um, a lot of things fell through the cracks. One of the things that fell through the cracks was the completion of the zoning regs, and we are working hard to, to clean up errors, any errors that we found in the finished product. So unfortunately, that's why we're going through this process, so I just wanna make that clear to everybody.
So Stuart, I think I, I can speak for everyone and say, no apologies necessary whatsoever for everything that you did is amazing. It was a huge undertaking, and you did it while you were ill. And the other major thing I wanna say is, our document is a living document. It changes. It cha- it could change monthly. It could change biannually. Bottom line is, our regulations are always a living document to reflect the changes in the town. So, A, no apology necessary, and B, this is part of it being a living document.
Okay, thank you.
So let's just go forward and, um, absolutely, positively, no, no apologies at all are warranted.
Okay.
Absolutely. I think, though, that, um, SLR owes you an apology, Stuart. I mean, that was your consultant, and he did not step up.
I agree a hundred percent.
Huh?
I said, I agree a hundred percent.
I mean, I just think that he owes us a refund on what we paid him, because what he did was substandard work, and I don't think that you should be taking any of the blame for that, and so therefore, we can go ahead, but I think that I wanted noted that, um, SLR is, um, not in my book.
Well, let's fix it. Bottom line is, let's fix it.
Yeah, I know.
Yep.
So do you wanna do this, um, just stuff that we saw when we read through, or?
We can ea- we can do it two ways. I can, we can either read through them completely, or if you have specific questions on things, then we can follow up with answers if we can't answer them right now.
Okay. I, I'm okay with not reading through all the pages and just jumping on the things that I, I read through them all at home, and I highlighted some things.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
One of the things I highlighted was.
What page are you on?
Um, I'm on page three.
Mm-hmm.
Automotive charging stations, non-commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so how would, for example, the, uh, Connecticut Water, which is gonna put in charging stations? So those are non-commercial charging stations, meaning they're not there to generate revenue for the owner. They're there for their private use, but C only designates residential. Should we say residential and private business?
So with C, we have an electrical vehicle that is accessory to a resident intended primarily for charging. Well, what we could say is, we could say, yeah, exactly that. We could say one owner used by owners of the business.
Yeah.
Just change the last, just let, change, have two of them. So it's gonna be electrical vehicles owned or used by the business.
Residence and private business.
Well, I would leave this one alone.
You leave the residential one alone?
And I would add another one. So you have automotive, automotive charging stations, EV, we could say residential.
Okay.
And then we could have another category. We're gonna have EV, which are commercial, but we're also gonna have one that's, that's not used as a, as selling a service.
Right, private business, non-revenue generating.
Private business, yeah. So it's gonna be an electrical vehicle charging station that is accessory to a private business.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
And is intended primarily for the charging of electrical vehicles owned or used by the business.
Yep.
So we're just.
Yeah, I, I saw a hole there that we were missing something.
No, we can do that.
Okay.
'Cause I remember Connecticut Water was putting them in behind their building for their own personal use, not to be rented out.
Yeah, yeah. Nobody's charging those, that, those are all commercial vehicles you being used by the business.
So we'll have three?
Yeah, we'll basically have three lines. We'll come up with a description for the second one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you want me to just keep going, and then somebody else can jump in there? Okay. So the next one I found was on page five, and it's a question. Um, in O, it says garden centers and nurseries. I think somewhere in there, the word host, I wrote wholesale on here for some reason. Why did I write wholesale? Business establishment engaged in the wholesale and retail.
Okay.
Because, um. Cromwell Growers is wholesale.
Right, and then the one next to Garden Dream is wholesale.
Is also wholesale, but they also sell retail.
Yep.
So I think it ought to have wholesale and retail.
Okay.
And in the, in the, um, in the name of it, it says garden center and nurseries. Should we have in there something about growers or garden center? It's Cromwell, Cromwell Growers is Cromwell Growers. Do we need to specify grower?
Well, I think nurseries are kind of implies.
Okay, alright, just skip that.
Yeah.
And then what about the one, though, that's down off of the road there that sells the flowers? What is she considered?
She's a farm. She's a farm.
Yeah, she's a farm.
That's just a farm? That's a flower farm?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Even though she sells retail, I think she also.
Well, you know, Phoenix Farm sells retail.
Right.
You can go there and buy vegetables out of their stand.
Okay, no, that's okay.
Yeah, and they also sell wholesale.
I just wanted.
She sells like cut flowers, not like, uh, buttered.
Yeah, she doesn't sell plants.
Right.
No.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that we're picking it all up. Okay, go ahead.
W, temporary storage. I don't know if there shouldn't be some type of a time period in there. So when does temporary storage become permanent storage?
What page are you on?
I'm on page six.
Yep, I see, temporary storage.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Um, also on page six, small engine repair. Business establishment engaged in the repair and maintenance of small engines and equipment such as lawn mowers, chainsaws, snow blowers, and then you mentioned motorcycles.
Yeah, we'll take that out of there.
Motorcycles are registered motor vehicles.
Yeah, we'll take that out of there.
So motorcycles probably shouldn't be there, but maybe motor scooters.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
What about E-bikes?
Should be added.
Motorcycles don't need to be registered.
Right.
What about those, is that those E-bikes?
Yeah, yeah, so just look at that and, uh, you know, figure out what, what the appropriate.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Um, and then same thing right below it, rental store. Business establishment engaged in the rental and equipment of equipment, tools, and then it says vehicles, but elsewhere, don't we have an automotive rental agency that would take care of vehicles?
It says excludes automotive. So you wanna take that sentence out of there?
No.
Excludes automo- automotive rental.
Oh, this includes.
Mine doesn't say.
It says excludes, the second to the last line, second, yeah.
Okay, so it excludes automobile rental agencies.
And residential retail property.
But in the first line, should we remove the word vehicles?
Yeah, but vehicles could be like an ATV, like a, like a UTV.
Okay, alright, alright. I hadn't thought of that.
Oh, okay, there's other type of vehicle.
It could be, it could be like a Honda Jeep, or they rent out pickup trucks. Well, that's the.
But that's.
We're taught, like, vehicles could be like a UTV or something like that, a side-by-side.
A quad.
Yeah, or even just a side-by-side that goes on a construction site or something.
Yeah, I, I hadn't even thought of, I hadn't even thought of ATVs or that kind of thing.
What if we, because we allow automotive rental agencies and residential properties under another category, what if we de- delete that? Or do you think that needs to be there?
Um, I'll defer to your expertise on that one.
Alright, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Take a look at it.
Yep.
Going forward. Page eight. Number four, five point one A, pools, minimum setback of ten feet from the side or rear property line is required for residential swimming pools.
Yep.
I'm just wondering why? If you could put a shed right on the property line.
Well, part of the thing was, you know, part of the logic behind this is, you don't want, yeah, because you don't want the fencing, you don't want the, so I'll give you an example. I had a guy that wanted the pool, put his pool right next to his deck.
Okay.
And then he realized that the pool had a fence around it, okay, and a lot of, a lot of above-ground pools that you see will have a patio around them and then a fence to prevent basically kids from jumping off the patio that's surrounding the above-ground pool. And so you don't wanna put that structure next to somebody's side yard where people could be jumping over another fence.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
There's another factor you might wanna consider, too. You know, do you wanna have, well, say in a small lot, quarter acre lot, or what, be a smaller, do you wanna have a pool that close to the property line with the filter, which is generating noise, when somebody's on equally small lot next door that is basically right on top of it?
The noise issue is the bigger issue, I think.
So you have, you have a filter, then you have all the, the pool-related noise.
Yep, yep.
To try to make it fair, I think the ten feet ma- meets it, makes it fair, but.
Okay.
It's not, it's not too imposing as far as a restricted setback.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just was questioning. Um, also on that same page, uh, section five B one-two, special permit required, um, and this is for the solar energy systems.
Right, all ground-mounted ones.
Right, so if someone already has one, like me, am I grandfathered from this regulation?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so my, my next-door neighbor would also be grandfathered, I would assume.
Yeah, if he's got one, yeah.
He does.
Yeah, anybody that's got it before the Z regs existed, they're grandfathered.
And then, um, also on top of that, would solar farms be exempt?
We don't regulate solar farms.
Okay, that, that's.
Solar farms are regulated by the state of Connecticut.
Actually, I think by the federal government as well, but that's.
Yeah.
So, I'll play my. No, but this says that, um, that height restriction is going to be eliminated. So, does that mean that they can have solar panels on the ground and be at any high up as you want it? Did you read this? That's how I took it, that you're, you're gonna take out the six feet.
No, that's a mistake. We don't wanna take out the six feet.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, yes.
Right, because, because the problem is, in our current regulations, so I'll give you an example. Hunter Berlin wrote, we approve the master plan, okay? There is no, there's nothing in our regulations that talks about modifying a master plan. So, that's why we wanna put that in there. Cause we kinda shot from the hip and said, well, a master plan's a special permit, so to modify it, you need to be, it has to be a special permit. But we'd rather have it clarified in the regulations that it needs to be modi- it, it, it requires a formal application in what category it's gonna be under.
Okay, so then we're gonna have it in so that there will be a plan.
Yep.
That we can do it.
So, if they modify it, it's clear what they have to do. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You have to add that.
Um, my next question was on, uh, page nine. At the very bottom of the page, uh, the proposed change, any tree which is proposed for removal shall be clearly designated on the site plan. Um. I guess my question is, how, what's the difference between a tree and brush? In other words, should we say something like, any tree with a caliper of six inches measured at four feet above actual ground level?
Yeah, we could, we could do that. I mean, the idea here is, we were just saying any tree so that, um.
But is a two-inch diameter sapling considered a tree and does it need to be identified? Or do we only wanna look at trees that are trees?
Well.
Four-inch, eight-inch, six-inch caliper.
What is a sapling but a tree?
But.
A young tree.
My point is, at some, at some point on this site plan, if you're gonna identify every two-inch tree that needs to be identified, you're not gonna be able to read the site plan. It's, it's gonna look like polka dot squares.
So, do you wanna say four inches or six inches?
I, I, I'm okay with whatever you decide. I just think that we need to say something about size so that somebody doesn't say. The, the, yeah, define a tree versus a sapling versus, or actually, don't even define sapling or anything. Define.
Define a tree.
Define the size of the tree that you want identified. Larger than XYZ measured at four feet off the ground or whatever, whatever normal protocol is.
Okay, we'll look, we'll look into that. Not a problem. Thank you very much for catching that.
Um, let's see. I'm almost. On page twelve. At the top of the page, my question was, what happens when someone gets sent a certified piece of mail and they don't pick it up? And there's no return receipt? They just let it die of old age at the post office?
Well, the problem we have is that we weren't following state statutes and that's why we were changing it.
Okay, so this has to reflect state statutes?
It has to reflect state statutes.
Okay. And I think that is all I had. Oh, I got one more.
Uh?
And it, it's not in this document. Um, I was looking at distance requirements of bar versus cafe versus restaurant and so on. It's all in our regulations on page ninety-two in our rights.
Right.
And the question that begs being answered is, I looked at the state liquor control regulations and the state liquor control regulations have no distance requirements. And I'm, I'm wondering whether or not our regulations have become a little bit more of a reflection of the blue laws, the old blue laws, than the present state liquor laws, which have no distance requirements.
Well, here's, here's how it kinda works. In, in all the towns that I've worked in, some towns, they don't have distance requirements.
Okay.
But, um, all the towns that I've ever worked in had distance requirements. When I came here, these were the existing distance requirements.
Right.
Nobody's ever brought up the idea of changing them. I'd be happy to entertain changing them. If you want us to investigate and give you examples of other municipality setbacks, um, we can take a look at it, we can contact.
Yeah, I think as long as we're doing all of this.
Sure.
At the same time, why don't we fold in, cause right now, we have distance requirements for package stores.
Yeah.
We have distance requirements, um, for.
Taverns.
Taverns, cafes and rest- uh, no distance requirements on restaurants.
No distance required for restaurants.
So, my, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, if the state liquor control commission has no distance requirements, period, on any of them, would we be better off reflecting the state liquor regulations rather than having distance requirements?
Well, that's kind of up to the community, um, and in the sense of whether or not, I mean, you know, you, you feel that there would be a proliferation of taverns or bars if, if you let go of that. So, it's really, it's really up to the community and how you feel.
Yeah, so, I, I mean.
I don't, how do the other commission members feel?
Wasn't, wasn't there a few years back, we had a discussion on this whole distance issue? And it had to do with number of liquor, liquor.
That's package stores.
Package stores, right.
Right, the s- the state.
But that kinda played into the larger conversation, cause I know we had some public comment about proximities.
Right.
About alcohol establishments and package stores, proximities to other things, especially when it came to schools and our mixed-use areas and things like that.
And, and the, the state regulations, will they still spell out schools, places of worship, that kinda thing? Those are spelled out.
Okay.
Um, and I'm not saying do away with all distance requirements. I'm just saying that we may wanna look at the distance requirements from, for example, cafe to cafe. Right now, I think we have a thousand or fifteen hundred feet.
Yeah, fifteen hundred.
It's fifteen hundred. And, and that has come up down the center of town. Because we have one permit that's cafe, another permit that's a restaurant, another permit that's a restaurant. And there, there really is no difference between any of them.
Excuse me. Restaurants don't have limitation and they can be.
On top of each other.
On top of each other and they all sell liquor, um, or they can sell liquor. And so, for me, understanding what this differential is with the word cafe does feel like a blue, blue law.
Well, I think part of it is, again, it's, it's the, it's the, the will of the community. A cafe license, you know, is a lot less restrictive than a restaurant license. If you have a cafe license, you don't have to have, you don't have to be a restaurant. And a restaurant has a, carries a lot of different connotations. Now, you know, at one time, people felt, you know, that cafes, which were basically bars, you know, would proliferate.
Yeah, bucket of blood.
Yeah.
You know?
So, I mean, so it's, it's really, it's up.
The red light district.
Yeah.
I understand.
Yeah.
But those days are gone.
Yep.
And honestly, I mean, if you think about people that go out and have a cocktail, whether it's a cafe or a restaurant, everybody's worried about the, the liquor le- regulations with DUI and everything. The limits are so low, you can't go out and have more than two drinks. So, it doesn't matter whether it's a cafe or a restaurant. You've gotta worry about the DUI.
But there was a density discussion that we had too with current liquor, existing liquor licenses.
That was about package stores.
But, but it all kinda played together though, didn't it? I mean.
I don't think it.
Looking at the corner lots and, and the distances from other corner lots and how, how, right, cause only so many packages are provided through.
Right, and honestly, I don't know that the package store distance requirement matters anymore either.
I don't, I'm not, yeah, I'm not questioning whether we need them or not, just, I know there's discussions.
Right, right.
And I don't know which, which.
What is the distance for smoke shops?
Pardon me? There is no distance for smoke shops.
There isn't.
We should have a moratorium on smoke shops, that's a better approach.
And maybe you wanna roll that into the changes also. But just as long as we're on this.
Sure, be happy to look at it.
Take, take a look at it and give us some advice and direction as to what you think.
Alright.
Um, just cause I think that it really is an antiquated regulation based on today's liquor consumption guidelines, if you will.
Well, the other big.
Limitations.
The other big taboo is the distance between, uh, be careful saying this, is the difference between automotive services facilities.
There you go. Let's, let's look at that as well.
Cause we require tw- two thousand six hundred feet.
I, I, again, I think that is a little bit antiquated. Um, that goes back to the days of, we don't wanna have a gasoline alley. But there is no such thing as gasoline alleys anymore. Every, every gas station is a convenience store. So, so maybe we wanna look at those distance requirements as well. As long as we're into this and we're gonna make, you know, fairly substantial changes, let's hit them all, or as many as we can think of.
Okay, and last but not least, the other taboo, which seems to be very prevalent in towns south of Hartford, is the ban of automotive sales. You'll notice there's no automotive sales in Weathersfield. There's no new car dealerships in Rocky Hill, and there's no new car dealerships in Cromwell.
Yeah, and why is that?
Because historically, they've all been viewed as a taboo and that they didn't wanna see them in their community. I have no idea why, but I've worked in all three.
But Cromwell used to have automotive sales on Main Street.
Yeah, but we never had a new car deal. We don't have a regulation that allows for new car dealerships.
Okay.
So, if I wanna, if I wanna build a new car dealership in Cromwell, I have to come in and amend the zoning regulations. Cause we don't allow for new car dealerships.
Well, Middletown is certainly cashing in on Newfield Street. And. Yeah, but even the town and country buildings are now all getting reused. There's only one that's still empty. One of them is a Dollar General.
Right, but the two big ones are still empty.
Yes, they are. They are. And I got a feeling that's only because the bank wants so much money for them that it was cheaper for Middletown Toyota to build a brand-new building on a completely different site, which kinda makes no sense, but that's.
So, so, so with the regulations for new car dealerships, right, that, that would cause other part of that concern should be traffic as well? Where it's located, right, what district it's located in, where?
Well, let's.
I'm just saying, would it be a mixed-use district? Would it be down in our industrial area or where would we live?
Well, the site that comes to mind, in my mind, is something along, uh, Route Three, the Northern Tier. Okay, another site that comes to mind, in my mind, would be the site behind the Sunoco Station on West Street.
Okay.
Um, neither one of the.
So, are you talking about where, where the Ukrainian?
No.
No, no. Where, um, you know the Sunoco Station?
Yeah, yes, that one I, yeah.
West Street.
Okay, so behind the Sunoco Station, there's a huge piece of property there. And I, have you ever had any dealers want to do anything with that?
Yeah, we've actually talked to somebody that, about that, and we explained to them that they had to come in and amend the zoning regulations to allow for that.
Okay, so, if they wanted to do it bad enough, they would do that, but evidently, they didn't wanna do it bad enough. My point is, as long as we're doing this, do we wanna close the door on that use or do we wanna open the door on that use in the appropriate spot in town? I'm not saying on Main Street and downtown, at the center of town, next to Community Field, but.
I mean, we could limit it to the highway business zone. So, or the business industrial parks. So, for example, the property, all the property located behind Texaco Station is in the business industrial zone.
Okay.
Okay, um, all the property up on Route Three, um, all those, you know, McIntyre's property, you have McIntyre's property on Route Three.
Yeah.
You've got the, uh, you've got the, the giant lamp, Plumbers Landscaping. You've got various small businesses in between that. Those are all located in the business industrial zone. So, um, if you wanted to say, well, let's look at new car dealerships as a permitted use and, you know, we could say they could be located, you know, in the business industrial zone for now. And then we could say they would be a special permit.
And that way, we could.
Yeah, do you have the discretion to review it?
Right, right.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be permitted as a matter of use.
We're not gonna get Joe and Harry that are buying junks and fixing them and calling it a u- or a new car dealer, or used car dealership.
No, we're saying new car dealership.
New car dealership.
Yep, specifically. We're not saying automobile car dealerships. We're saying new car dealerships, which is very different.
So, what if you advocated, is, is it, is contrary to that, or not contrary, but different to that? Oh, we just wait for an application and then the regulations when it's time? Why wouldn't we wanna do that and just leave it the way it is?
Because I think the fact that we have a prohibition on it right now.
It limits the.
Limits the number of people that are gonna wanna come in and even bother to apply. When other towns around us, like Middletown, for example, welcomes them with open arms on Newfield Street. And, and again, this is, you know, it's a discussion and we have a public hearing and we listen to what the public has to say, but if the public doesn't really have any problem with it, then it's up to us to decide whether or not it's a good idea, a horrible idea. We can always say no.
Put it on the table and see what happens.
Exactly, exactly. Let's throw it at the wall and see what sticks. I mean, I, I'm okay with it. Everybody else.
I think it merits a discussion.
Yeah.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Right, I mean, we can always say no, let's leave it the way it is.
As long as they don't have those.
Do we wanna look at separation distance between automotive uses? I mean, right now, we have two thousand six hundred feet. So, you know, I mean, the only thing, you know, there's, there's, hasn't been a lot of locations. There are a few that people were interested in, but they couldn't because they were within two thousand, you know, obviously another convenience store, gas station. So, an example, I'll give you a good example, the property across the street from the Texaco.
Yeah.
The only people that ever expressed any interest in that were people that wanted to build a giant gas station. You know, Allah with, you know, with the, the canopy that covers, you know, half an acre and the convenience store that's ten thousand square feet.
I mean, really?
So, I mean, what's, where's the negative?
It's the, it's the prolifer- if, if you have concerns about the proliferation of that. Cause I mean, there's not, you know, it's, it's, that's just the way it is. I mean, right now, we don't have a proliferation of that.
Right.
Um, I, I don't think we're gonna see a proliferation of gas stations or automotive repair. I think we're, you know.
Right.
I mean, the thing that people wanna do, obviously, is they wanna do towing, but we've limited that to the industrial zone.
Right.
Um, but that's a very, I mean, once you have one tow operator, you're not gonna have a, there's just not that many tow operators. Because they're also vying for police and state contracts.
Yeah, they all wanna get on the list, the call list.
Everybody wants the state contract.
Yeah, everybody wants to, so once one guy's in here and he's got the state contract, you're not gonna have other people coming in.
If the area exists, you will, you will have guys coming in.
Yeah.
Well.
If you have the area to put them in.
I think it's worthy of a conversation.
Yep, okay.
Um, not necessarily approval, but it's worthy of a conversation.
Okay.
You mean to have all those junks come in?
No, no, to, to talk about the distance requirements between automotive operations. Right now, it's what, two thousand?
No, twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred.
Okay, when you talk about automotive operations.
Gas stations.
Oh, wonderful. I mean, take a look at West Street. I mean, there isn't enough on there?
It's not a matter of not enough or enough. It's a matter of whether or not we wanna continue the distance requirement between them.
Well, because that, that eliminates us having gasoline alley. And considering that you live down in the woods and I live in gasoline alley, I have a different approach on it. I mean, you know.
I like the woods.
No, I'm not saying that, but I said that's how, you know, I mean, really and truly. Do you wanna have a gasoline station on Nooks Hill Road? Maybe you would.
We could put one there, Alice.
Huh?
Could put one.
Okay, that's great.
Right before the bridge.
No, but I.
Actually, there's an, that's an industrial area.
Right, but I'm just saying it's.
You could put one there. Where, right, right before the railroad trestle.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Public Works Building.
Public, the old building there.
Yeah, yeah.
Put it in.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I think it's worthy of a conversation. I'm not saying that it's worthy of approval or change, but I think it's worthy of, if we're gonna look at distance requirements.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, look at it.
Let's look at all of them and, and if we wanna stick with that one and keep. Let's look at all of them, and, and if we wanna stick with that one and keep it, then we stick with that one and keep it. No harm, no foul.
No, I was just wondering exactly what it was and.
Yeah.
You know. Okay. Okay. We'll go with you, come all the way around.
Anybody else have any things that jumped out on the app?
Just a question at the end of the, uh, the entirety of the page.
Um, I'm just curious, I mean, I don't know how.
What page?
Um, I'm on page, uh, my page fifteen and sixteen. The application types and procedures, um, I kinda like having the procedural information reference to look back into it, um, what sections they're in. Was there, is that because it's hard to, is it difficult to maintain because we changed the regulations? You know, the look backs, like zoning sign-off, town staff, six-point-three-point-A. And I think the requirement, the, the request was maybe to take it, take that off and just have two columns instead of three.
We can lea- we can leave it that way.
I'm not bothered so much either way, I mean, the other way, but it's nice for someone who's visual like me to see that and not have to go hunt for something.
No, I think that's fine, we'll just keep it the way it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we just say no change, except, I think there was one.
Anybody else have anything that jumped out at them?
Change permit, you, change permit, is that, you want that to come out?
Where are you?
Um, on page sixteen, it shows that change permit was just crossed out. Change of use permit. That was eliminated. I didn't understand why.
I don't understand why, I'll check it.
Okay. But no change to it, really. Leave this as.
So, page fifteen stays, page sixteen goes.
Yeah, sixteen's gone anyway, but fifteen stays.
Yep, got that.
Anne? Or no, are you finished, Nicholas?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. Anne?
The only question I had was on the bicycles, and if the state is asking for all of this, then that's fine.
What pa- what page you, what page you?
Page ten.
I didn't find the bicycles though in our regulations. Bicycle was not in number eight, it was ten. I had that on here, I looked at everything.
I'm just aware that the new bicycle rack that was put in front of, I think, Woody's, um, it, it's there, it's great. If you're going to the park perhaps, or, but riding bicycles on our streets are questionable because there are no bike lanes. So, I was just curious about how all the bicycle information was written up.
Well, you know, there, there are many communities that don't have bike lanes and people ride bicycles.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's why, you know, we have, we have this here, um, because we want people to provide facilities, um, and, you know, because people are gonna ride their bicycles without bike lanes, so that's why we felt it was necessary to have this. To, to ignore it, we didn't think it was appropriate.
Also, I just wanna bring that, it says here, th- this currently reads, well, when I looked at my new ones, I could not find anything about bicycle and bicycle parking in the regulations.
Section five point seven H?
I have it here. It's not there. I have it all down.
I'm looking, hold on.
That is under landscaping, five point seven. My numbers appear as like.
You're right, I don't know why it's like, we'll have, we'll look into that.
Okay, right.
Stu, I think my basic concern was that, uh, for all new commercial developments.
Do this for you?
To be requiring that they have bicycle racks, I'm just thinking about the space actually at a Hundred Berlin Road.
Pardon me?
I was thinking about the spacing at Hundred Berlin Road with the requirements for as much bicycle.
Okay, that's.
Space. I mean, I, I'm not against bicycles, I think bicycle racks are helpful.
Oh, given the number, you're talking about four dwelling units or more?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Well, all it says is you gotta have one. It doesn't say you have to have so many bicycle racks. I, I don't understand why they couldn't have one at one Hundred Berlin Road. It says bicycle facility shall be provided as part of a new multifamily development.
Yep.
You know, containing four or more dwelling units. Yeah. Okay, thank you. It's on a hundred and thirty hours of the new regulations.
Bicycle parking?
Even on Main Street, I mean, people.
It's five point H.
It's crazy.
What is it, five point?
Oh, maybe that's five point.
Yeah, it's wrong. Thank you.
That's okay.
Yeah, five point eight H.
Okay.
So, the correct heading would be five point eight H.
Okay, so then if we take a look at it though, no, go ahead, you finish, then I'll pick it up. But, uh, when you take a look at, uh, five point eight H, and it says here, bicycle parking requirements shall apply to all new construction, change of use, or substantial improvement. Is that just, just for multifamily developments?
No, it's for everything. Bicycle parking facility shall be provided as part of new multifamily developments or four or more dwelling units or more, new retail, office, and institutional developments, and all transfer tran- all transit transfer stations and parking ride lots.
Okay, so it's, you have to have four, four dwelling units?
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to.
Four dwelling units or more.
More, okay. Thank you.
So, if I have a three-family house, I don't have to have a bicycle rack?
Right. I don't have anything else.
No.
Anybody else have anything else? Doug?
No, I'm good.
Eddie?
I'm good.
I do.
I was asking you last.
I know. Okay. I went, I went through it all and I did.
What did I miss?
Not much. Okay, on page twelve. Okay. You already talked about that, I believe, um, about the certified mail return receipt.
Right, yeah.
And then, um, explain the reworded and renumbering, page one ninety. Mine is a little bit different because I, my, my regulations, cuz I re-paginated it, so I cut it off. Cuz I like to use my. Okay, application, and it's under use permit, application requirement.
What, what, what page, where are we?
Page twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, you're page twelve.
Okay.
Twelve pa- right. And if I looked in, I was just wondering, um, why, you know, completed form, is there a reason why all of this proposed change, the above paragraph refers to a request for zoning approval? So, right here, we have application requirements in our zoning regulations. Are you gonna just look at what's in the zoning regulations? And I was just wondering why you were changing. And I don't think that we have these. Is this the new ones that you have here on page twelve? And it says proposed change, the above paragraph actually refers to request for zoning approval. So therefore, we would just take out and just change it, is that it? We just, once you make these changes that are here and that I have in red, that was given to you.
Right.
Okay. That's all on that one. Oh, and then I wanted to know why, has the, um, ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, have they read these? Did you go to their commission with all of the, the different things that you have in here? And say, did they, because tha- that is not our regulations. They may be in our zoning.
Where, where, what are we talking about?
The Zoning Board of Appeals, that's in our regulations.
The administration, the administration of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Right.
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty standard state statute language.
No, I know, but have you brought it to their attention?
No, we, we're gonna bring it to their attention, but we wanted to bring it to your attention first.
Oh, okay, all right. And, um, also on page.
Speaking of the Zoning Board of Appeals, can I interrupt you?
No.
Um, so, there's one issue here in Cromwell that, you know, that we wanna look at, um, and, and that is this. So, we have a lot of zones, specifically, probably the primary area we get for variances are people that live on existing lots. And these existing lots were rezoned. So, the lots were never in compliance, okay? They don't have thirty-five-foot front yard setbacks. They don't have twenty-foot side yards. They don't have fifty-foot backyards, cuz they never did. We basically placed our zoning requirements on existing properties, and we made them all non-conforming. So, if I wanna build a deck, um, and this is primarily in the neighborhood, is you go north on Main Street and you go over to the left and you have all the post-World War Two housing.
Right.
All the capes, all the little ranches, those are all basically non-conforming. And more people come in for variances because I wanna build a deck, I wanna put a cover over my front porch, so I'm not getting wet when I go to open the front door. I mean, pretty basic things.
But wouldn't all of those basic things be considered a hardship because the town changed the rules?
Right, right, right.
So, that's their, that's their ability.
Their rationale, yeah.
To get, to go to ZBA.
Right.
That's their hardship.
That's their hardship, because they're on a non-conforming lot.
Right.
Which the town made non-conforming.
Right, it was conforming.
So, they always get their variance, they always get their variance.
Right.
But one idea, and the ZBA had asked me to look at this, one idea was, is there any language you could put in the zoning regulations which could address that? And that might be something for us to take a look at.
Well, how would you say it?
Well, you could say that you, we'll take a look at what other towns do, but, you know, based on, on, if you own a lot that is non-conforming.
Okay.
You have a lot that is non-conforming, the house, you have an existing house on a non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
You know, you might be able to say that, that there'll be a certain amount of flexibility allowed within the setbacks for minor additions. So, a deck could be considered a minor addition. I mean, somebody's, I mean, it's kind of an expense, and, uh, I mean, just you know, I got this little house and I would put a, a ten-by-twelve deck on the back of my house, and I can't do it until I get a variance.
So, let me, let me throw this question at you.
Sure.
I was always under the impression that whatever regulations were in place at the time the lot was approved, are the regulations that stick in terms of.
No.
That's not true?
No. No, cuz we changed them all.
Right, but couldn't you say that whatever regulations were in place at the time of?
I don't have information about what regulations existed back then. I can't tell you what the setback was.
Probably none, to be honest with you.
Yeah, because.
This is probably all predate zoning.
Right.
Cuz zoning in Cromwell was what, late fifties, early sixties?
Fifty-four.
Is that when you got on?
I was, I was on in fifty-five.
I wasn't looking at you.
You were on the commission, right?
He's been on, he's been on longer than me.
Oh, really? Now, what to just?
Yeah.
At birth.
Right.
So, so, but for some.
So, how do we fix it?
It really does the property itself create, create an impediment to allow you to do certain things. Part of that whole ZBA process is the property as well as conforming.
But, but ZBA technically is not supposed to grant a permit unless the applicant can show a hardship.
The hardship, but the hardship's related to, to the property itself.
Well, the hardship is related to the fact that Cromwell set up regulations and changed the rules midstream.
I don't know if that's the definition of hardship from the time I was on ZBA.
Well, see, that's what, let's, let's just take a step back.
Yeah.
That's, that's why we wanna look at that, because why, you know, why make every Tom, Dick, and Harry who lives in a little house and wants to build a deck, he's gotta go get a variance, he's gotta pay a fee, he's gotta put a sign up. He's gotta notify Butters.
But also, why doesn't the, either the zo- planning and zoning or the ZBA go to the town council, to our legal, and just say, is, this is a problem. How can we legally take care of it?
Well, you can take care of it through zoning.
That's why we're sitting here.
No, I know, but when you work, right, but I think that this requires our lawyer.
You think this is a Carrie Olson?
Yes.
Way in on it?
Right, a way to make it so that, how she can word it so that it can be done legally. That's how I look at it. We're not li- we're not lawyers.
All right, so, so your suggestion is that we refer it to town council. Explain the problem, refer it to town council, and let Carrie Olson come up.
I'll draft a memo, I'll draft a memo to the town manager, asking Carrie Olson to investigate this issue.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
How's that sound?
That sounds good.
Because I just think that also, how I look at it is, did our town council look how we did it before? It had to go before the town council, our zoning regulations, to make sure that we were within making it legally with the state statutes and things like that.
Well, I think, I think the suggestion of referring it to town council is a very good one.
Okay.
And I, and, and if Carrie can come up with a legally binding way of doing it without affecting future regulations, it's probably a smart way to go.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, sorry, Alice, sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no, 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 that's okay. Okay, I think that's bicycle parking. We don't have any freight, do we have freight tr- truck or bus terminals? I mean, I know we put in, is that in case we get something, or that we, we shouldn't just not put them in?
Well, we, 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 um.
We almost had freight.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Yeah, distribution center was.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That was freight on steroids.
Yeah.
Yeah, we thought it would be helpful to have a definition.
But we have it in our regulations.
Well, that's why it's there. That's, that's why it's there.
Right. It's in the industrial zone, I think.
Right, in the industrial zone.
And then, um, page seven.
Page seven, got it.
Temporary or special events. And it says here, twelve events per calendar year or two events per month permitted by right in residential areas. Includes but not limited to festivals, markets, carnivals, seasonal sales, pop-up vendors, and celebrations. I mean, and it's allowed by right in residential areas, all these areas.
Right, well, think of churches. The people that have special, the speech, people that have special events, you know, are not the retail stores. The people that have special events are a church, a festival, something like that, a carnival at the church, that kinda thing. That's what this kind of implies.
It implies, but a house could have it cuz they're residential. It doesn't, you don't say like, um, a community entity could have it. I mean, if you read that, that means that anybody in these zones can have a, bring in a carnival on their lawn. Or bring up a pop-up vendor on their lawn.
Okay, we'll look at that.
There's a time limit.
Right, and, and then you have either two or just. two or just events, and then it goes to twenty-four.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
Okay, if you could just look at that, I, you know.
All right, we'll take a look at that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, just that, um, and I think in there, you can look, and in our regulations, we have a variance, but we have a way in approvals, so it should be moved up under Zoning Board of Appeals.
Where, where are you?
Um, I'm on page- Oh, and it's under, it's under six point three section, and it's under L, variance.
Is there, you got a page number in what I'm?
Well, probably two hundred, I, mine is two twenty-nine, but that's not what you're gonna have. And it's under-
So you're in the book.
Vending, right, I'm in, I'm in the zoning-
You're in the book, you're not in this.
I'm, right.
Are you looking at vending permits?
Under pa- go past that, vending J, vending permits. Right, and then you have K.
Was it six point three what?
Six point three K, and then it goes to L. Who's it, what page you got it at?
Page thirteen, come this one.
Oh, page thirteen, no, right, but I mean, in the zoning book. But it's under six point three L in the zoning book. No, L, go past to L. That's a variance.
What page is in the zoning regs?
Okay, hold on, I just found six point three, which is on one sixty-seven. And you said it was L?
Right, L variance, it says.
I'm getting it.
Six point three L.
One ninety-four.
One ninety-four.
What he said.
That's what Bruce said.
Yeah. Okay, six point three L.
And I don't, that should come under where we have the zoning, ZBA. That should not be way over here, because that's under all of the conditions of ZBA, that belongs to ZBA.
Hey, I got an easy, 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 easy suggestion. When the zoning reg book is reprinted, at the very top of the page, could you put the section number?
Right.
So we could basically flip through a lot of pages fast to get to six point three?
Six point one, six point two, six point three, six point four.
Right, yeah, just at the very top of the page.
You'd put it in the header, and it would be the page number along with the section number.
Right, so, uh, right now it says Town of Cromwell, Section Six, Administration Procedures Enforcement. But instead of just saying S- Section Six, it could say Section six point three, six point four, six point- to be able to find things faster and easier. So what were you looking at on this?
No, I said that this belongs with, under ZBA, under the other section where it was the zoning board. Yeah, because that's what it's talking about. All of a sudden, it's out here someplace. This is the authority of it, what the ZBA has, you know, proceedings.
Well, does it though? I mean, Section Six is Administration Procedures Enforcement.
But-
So isn't-
But that is, that's-
A variance, a procedure?
But it's not, it's not zoning. It is ZBA. So it belongs in the section under ZBA.
You're saying it belongs on page one fifty-seven? That's where the ZBA is?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Under the powers and duties?
Yeah, the authority, yeah.
Okay, I got that, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, probably zoning board of, powers and duties, variance authority, and so on. Yeah, that makes sense. Good catch.
Okay, that's pretty good.
Anything else?
Not at the moment, I think that when we get through this, then we can go back and take a, the final look.
Okay, we'll work on that, thank you very much, I'd ask the commission to keep the public hearing open.
Okay, I'll make a motion to keep the public hearing open.
Second on that, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. All right, approval of minutes, let's see who's here. So we have Alice, myself, Anne, John, Nick, Andrew, Vinny. The only person that's here that can't vote tonight on that is Doug. So I'll make a, unless anybody has any changes to those minutes. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
All in favor?
Aye. Commissioner's comments?
Go ahead.
So, I'd just like to report out, um, on a couple of events that, with the Rivercog that took place recently. Uh, one event was a virtual meeting that, um, my colleague Anne was involved with as well last Friday. But first, let me just point out that, um, the upcoming meeting on eleven twenty-four, which is available to everybody, if you go to the Rivercog site, is going to be talking about and having an overview of House Bill eight zero zero two, and that concerning the housing growth, which, uh, was recently passed by the legislature. Uh, it may be something that all of us, um, I've started to read the bill, it's, it's a little confusing to me, because I, that's not what I do for a living. Um, but I know it looks like it sets up some kind of a state regulatory process. I don't know if they've talked to anybody in town, what our feelings were on it. I know I've never seen a legislature in my seventeen-plus years in this co- in this commission come and talk to us about anything that has to do with, with regulations and town ordinances or anything like that, I saw.
I think, um, let me in- interrupt and say that, um, I did talk to James, and James was trying to make arrangements with someone from CCM to come and actually visit with the commission, and give us a plain language explanation of the regulate, the new regulations. And that, he was trying to set that up for some time in January.
Well, that's, that's good, because there are some, some aspects of five and ten-year reporting that it wasn't quite clear to me, and how those assets get, get, get called or added to, or, um, but my point more was that, in all the years that I've been doing this, I haven't had a legislative person come in here and say, this is what we wanna do, what do you think?
You, and you won't.
Right, but, but now they're passing legislation that, that affects our town, but they've never really talked to anybody about how it affects our town.
They also didn't have any public hearings, and they also didn't-
Correct, it was fast-tracked again.
This was a travesty from the word go.
So, anyways, the Rivercog is having that meeting next Monday. If you're interested in, in listening in, and, and you can be part of that discussion, at least listening to it, it, go to the Rivercog site, and there'll be a link for it.
Okay.
And you can attend and listen to see what they have to say. Many towns are not really happy with this, for a number of different reasons, but, um, we did, um, the s- the, the second point was that Anne and I attended a virtual workshop, uh, to guide regional strategy, which I found a bit confusing. Um, it was on Friday, it was about an hour, it was hosted by the Rivercog. And, and they were talking about, um, towns participating in polling and collaborative exercises that will feel direct, feed directly into Connecticut Main Street centers. So they were talking about Main Streets, right, what is a downtown? What are creative districts? Right, those types of things, and there was a survey or some SWAT, SWAT analysis that we did. But for me, it was very confusing, I don't know, did, did you wanna lend any comments to that, Anne? Because you, I think you have a better handle on it than I do, sorry to put you on the spot. But I did.
Thank you, actually, I have spent some time with this because of the creative district. And one of the things that I asked right at the beginning of the meeting was how a Main Street district would work with the cultural district. So, one of the things I learned is Main Streets were identified under the Historical Preservation Group back in nineteen eighty. In twenty-ten, the creative districts were put together by the National Endowment for the Arts. In twenty-nineteen, our state decided to talk about cultural districts, because it is easier to get money from it when you include the humanities, rather than when you just use the word art. So there are three different groups vying for basically the same area. And that is, for a very small town, a serious question. I called the regional director, we're under Shoreline Alliance instead of Hartford, and I called him, and his comment was that the state hasn't figured this out yet either. So we have a-
Gee, that's shocking.
So we have a, we have an ordinance in our town for a cultural district. The creative district has been asked not to hold events any longer and to sunset, which we have done. Um, as of our completion of the AARP grant, uh, if you look at our website, you can see that today it was posted uh, with our leadership letter to every, all of our members and to the town at large that the creative district would be confusing if it remained and there is a cultural district. One is municipal, the other was a nonprofit, so they had a different structure. But then, to hear that there's a Main Street that has been in existence since nineteen eighty, but our town was, Rivercog regionally, is talking about asking towns to please put this into, uh, focus, just seemed like it was a little bit of a, oh, by the way, one of the big things is with the Main Street, it has to be run by a nonprofit, it cannot be run by the municipals. So, you know, we just stopped with creative district, which could have maybe been a Main Street, but there aren't enough volunteers as it is to go around. So it is a very confusing situation, which hasn't been straightened out. I did speak with the mayor about it on Monday morning, and he is shaking his head as well. Clearly, um, this coming Monday, not clearly, but this coming Monday, the cultural district will be meeting again in order to try to get the application into state, in order to get, hopefully, it accepted, which would mean the cultural district will exist, and we don't know how long the district will be, because the current state leadership has had multiple points of view on that. The original leadership said it could go all the way to the TPC, the most recent leadership said it could only go from the congregational church to the train station, which is really a Main Street. Uh, is usually a, a city block or two city blocks. We're not a city, you know, our cultural aspects range in a much different area, so it's too much information, but that's kind of the, the top level.
Thank you, Anne, and just to add to that, to my confusion in, in my mind, the exercises we were performing talked about downtowns and downtown areas, not cultural districts, not creative districts, but downtowns. And what's our downtown? I mean, our downtown is a block. I, I mean, if you want to, generally speaking. So, so when you combine that with the other discussions, and Stu, I'm sorry, we're not planners, but when you throw this stuff at, at laypeople, and you're saying creative, cultural, now you say, well, let's talk about your downtown. Well, what downtown? I mean, it just gets confusing.
We have three.
Yeah, there you go, we have three cents.
We really do, we have three seventy-two.
Yep.
We have downtown.
Yep.
And then we have uptown, downtown.
Right, the, 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 up nearby, yeah, towards the TPC side, right.
Yeah.
So anyways, I just wanted to let you all know that these discussions are happening, and if more information comes available, I will distribute it for you to read and talk about. But, uh, the important one, I think, is that Monday meeting, if you have a chance and some time, you wanna tune into it, just to see what the regional perspective is on this whole housing bill.
And what time is that at?
It usually starts at seven AM, uh, PM, not AM, PM.
And that's when the cultural district is missed.
So if they're gonna throw money at downtown, maybe we can get it times three, because we have three.
There you go, money and grants.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming, and, um, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Motion to-
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
No, third.
Thank you very much, everybody.